Good evening. We call to order the regularly scheduled meeting for the village council, June 24th, 2019. Seven. Yeah. And I'd like to please stand for the pledge of allegiance in our course.
The pledge of allegiance is required by the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bryce?
Here.
Botsu?
Here.
Eshman?
Here.
Oras, Bax, and Pottis. Hayden?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Skorica?
Here.
And the course of approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda by adding the status of a manager position.
Or 14H. That's what it was going to be.
Yeah, I'm not sure where.
14H, manager interviews?
Well, it should be A because it should be a priority, that H is fine.
Anything else?
I make a motion to approve the agenda amended.
Support.
Motion made by Councilwoman Skorica, supported by Councilwoman Hayden. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, six zero. Next up, we have our approval of meeting minutes. We'll get three minutes, seven minutes to approve. First, we will do the May 20, 2018.
If, um, I may, if you're all okay with it, I'm just, because we have something to go through, unless there's going to be amendments ready, you can do like each of the village council minutes with one motion, the CBA with one motion, and, uh...
So, we would like to get a motion from the village council, Liz.
Did you make those changes?
Um, I made everything about one, and I told you I was going to verify, and I verified that, um, the June 10th was correct for the video, but other than that, I didn't make all those corrections.
Okay.
So, it's the questions, were there, like, did they come in after the package was approved?
Yeah. Yeah, I went in Friday with some of them, and then there was one today. Um, it was just some clarification, some wording, nothing that's changed the content too much. There was, what was it, one? You might have it done with your corrections, Liz.
I have, um, from the May 20th, just under trustee committee updates for trustees Skorica, I reworded and missed a word. Um, and then, under master plan approval, um, I have, the approval was tangled to the June 10th meeting. She had requested I change that to the next meeting, but, um, on the video, it was June 10th.
Okay, and then, and you inserted wait for final draft package?
No, because that was not even mentioned. The only thing that was mentioned was, um, the lack of maps. So, it was delayed because there was not enough time to review what was provided.
I thought when we viewed, we had the discussions, and she was here from Canada, and they recommended that we get the final draft first before we move forward, and therefore, that was the reason why we delayed moving it forward. And it was questioned, that was recommendation, did she...
She just said, if you're not comfortable approving what you have in your hand, that she would recommend you wait.
Till the final draft.
I don't remember her saying that.
Wait, all right, all right.
So, I could just suggest that we just put, just for clarification as to the reason why, just waiting for the final draft package, just like every question.
Is this, is this accurate to what was actually stated at the video? Then I think that, you know, we shouldn't add extra clarification that wasn't spoken at that meeting, that's not appropriate. We should stick to what was actually stated at the meeting, actual reading for that. So, um, more time? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the village council meeting minutes from the special meeting of June 10th, 2019, the special meeting of May 23rd, 2019, and the regular meeting of May 20th, 2019.
Support. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries, six zero. Item D will be Arizona Board of Appeal.
And I did do those two suggested.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning board appeals minutes of June 10th, 2019, as presented. Support. Amendment, I'm sorry.
Yes, presented.
Well, it was presented.
All right, great.
But it was supposed to...
I'd just like to comment, I won't be voting on this because I wasn't physically present, I was on the phone, and it wasn't necessarily all clear when I, when I was attempting some of the things, so I'm gonna...
You still require to vote on?
On the, uh, the minutes, all right.
So, Mark, would you, might bring your motion down?
Uh, suggestive motion is to the minutes of the zoning board of appeals, um, to approve the zoning board of appeals through minutes of June 10th, 2019, yes presented.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, six zero. Okay. And next up, we have three of the personnel minutes.
I'd like to make a...
I'm sorry, two, that would be, go ahead, May 30th through 4th.
On item E, um, for the, uh, May 30th, where it says, also, uh, present trustees Botsu, Eshman, George, Skorica, and three village manager candidates, I'd like to add that's scheduled, because they weren't all there at that time when we, when we did point. And, um, oh yeah, um, and then also, it says, right below that, um, approval of agenda, this is all of the, this is no shit carrying.
I already got that.
Okay, all right. And, uh, and so, therefore, I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel committee meeting minutes of May 30th, June 3rd, 2019, as amended. June 4th, I'm sorry.
These should just be accepted, because, like, it's not a form for the minutes, I think these just need to be accepted by personnel and council, not to be voted on, because you're not a former advisory committee.
Okay. So, yeah, we're doing this, excellent.
It should just be accepted, not approval.
Do I have to repeat this? I want to accept it. There's only the personnel committee who'll vote on it.
I know, like, yeah, I know, I'm just making a suggestion that it should be just accepted.
The reason why I put them in here is because it was a public meeting.
Yeah.
That's true, and we haven't had a personnel, we as a personnel committee have not approved, so we would need to approve our motion first, correct?
We have a motion titled by Councilwoman Robinson. Support.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, three zero.
I won't verify that.
Yeah, okay.
Next up, we have our acceptance items, and this month, this includes the billing department report, our ordinance violation report, and the board minutes from, um, the Portonville Development Authority for two dates, and the Brandon Township for two dates, and the planning commission did not meet this. Following that, we are dispersments.
I have a, a question on item number 19. Where it states, has to do fireworks, and so is it Friends of Amos that is putting on the fireworks and managing all the funds for the fireworks?
From, um, well, yeah, that's, are they accepted donations as a part of the budget?
And is that, are those funds also included in the DDA budget?
Pardon?
Those funds, the Friends of Amos funds, are they also included in the, in the DDA budget?
What do you mean, included? Is the project and then the incoming or the outcome?
The dollars that are going in and out.
Okay, purple.
Correct.
Isn't that similar to DDA?
Well, it's not, it's, I think it's, um, I think it'd be somewhat, though, like, in Brandon Township, Parson Recreation Department, the Bureau's also Brandon Community Department Board, which was 501(c)(3), they had collective donations to the board's improvements, so they were really separate organizations.
And did Fred, Fred manage that? I wonder if that example of Fred's.
No, Fred did not manage that, they, uh, I think Friends of Amos would have its own separate organization.
No, 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 I know that Fred's now managing Friends of Amos, but he gave me the, the example of the recreation.
Well, if we donate to Friends of Amos, they in turn would contribute towards the fireworks and would, uh, most likely, that money would, would somehow get input into the budget from the DDA, there wouldn't be a specific line item directing the DDA, but the Friends of Amos donations.
So, does the Friends of Amos pay for the fireworks?
They come from multiple banks of money.
We have to factor, since he's here, to probably explain this to more of us.
I'd like, I'd just like to know that, so if we're giving money to Friends of Amos, and Friends of Amos has not paid for the fireworks, then you're taking that money and then putting it into somebody else, right?
Fund are not communal between Friends of Amos and the DDA. Friends of Amos has its own bookkeeping, DDA has its own bookkeeping, um, we don't contributions to Friends of Amos do not find their way into the DDA's budget.
And does the DDA money find its way into the Friends of Amos?
We're specified in the budget where we make a contribution to an event, just like you did with the fireworks.
And then, how, so I understand how the DDA financial budget is reviewed and recorded, so how is the Friends of Amos budget reviewed and recorded?
By the Friends of Amos board, which consists of...
To whom though? To whom?
To the IRS.
Who do you, the IRS?
Michigan, they're not an IRS, so they don't have to report to us.
They're non-procedural.
So, they're reported to the IRS as it relates to the 501(c)(3).
Very good, very, thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Can we entertain a motion for the dispersments?
Make a motion to approve the dispersments for May 16th through June 15th, 2019, in the amount of $13,637.7.
Motion made by Councilwoman Skorica, supported by Councilwoman Robinson. Are there any further questions? All right, Gary Dunn, I think there's several called over there. Botsu?
Yes.
Eshman?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skorica?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Motion carries, six zero. Thank you. Next, I have the pressures report, and that would be the month ended May 31st, 2018. Motion table for that.
I'd make a motion to approve the pressures report for the month ended May 31st, 2019, as presented, support.
Motion by Councilwoman Eshman, supported by Councilwoman Hayden. Are there any further questions on that? And all in favor? Opposed. Motion carries, six zero.
I just have a question for, um, if, if the pressure could just provide the petty cash, um, information, the receipt, the petty cash.
You, you question for the next?
The next meeting is done.
If, if you look on the cash report, this one, it is included in there. So, the balance says, well, 531, it's $193, and 50 cents.
Right, the receipts, uh, what was, what's, that's the balance, but the money going, because the balance, well, I don't see, the transactions of the money coming in and out, that's what I'm looking for, is the receipts, not the balance.
Okay, there's that. It's basically used for change. Uh, the only time we really use it is if we take some to the, some to the post office that costs $1.95 for postage, um, we use it for that also. But I have, I do have all those receipts.
Okay.
Is, is there a concern that you have about...
No, just because we haven't, we haven't seen them, so I'm just asking.
Because I mean, I, I...
As council, we haven't seen.
I do know we have, we authorize certain spending, discretionary spending, unless, my feelings, unless there's a, a real concern there, I hate to burden our staff with an extra effort just to provide more details, there's not any real concern or value on that song.
The next meeting is done.
Does township also require the same type of thing? I don't know if township does, we're not...
It never required receipts for the petty cash. Up to a, just a certain amount, I believe there's a 250, there's a 250.
There's an accounting process for it, I'm just looking for the accounting, so...
Heard I thought it...
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Great, item number nine will be our Main Street accreditation presentation, and with that, we welcome John Bry and Joe Ross to the stage, here to the podium, please, to the stage.
Good evening, Madam President, and members of council, and, uh, members of the Ortonville community. Um, John Bry sends his regrets, there were some scheduling changes, and he's doing this exact same thing right now, uh, in Ferndale, there's actually three presentations across the county this evening. Um, so, as you know, you are a member of, uh, the Main Street Oakland County Program, a select level community, and what that means is you have a traditional downtown. Our select level communities, each year, go through a national accreditation process against the Main Street America, um, 10, uh, Main Street performance standards, and I'm honored and pleased to announce to the council and the community that, uh, downtown Ortonville is accredited, uh, for another year. Uh, well done, uh, you met, uh, all of the, uh, the 10 criteria with flying colors. Um, some of those criteria, just to name a few, I won't list up all 10 of them, is that you have paid professional staff, you have broad-based community support, you have working committees, uh, you have, uh, a, a, a budget, uh, et cetera. There's a, there's like a, a list of 10 criteria. Um, so, this evening, I'm here to present to you, um, from the National Main Street Center and, uh, Main Street Oakland County, uh, this certificate that reads, "The National Main Street Center and Main Street Oakland County certify that Ortonville Downtown Development has been recognized as a 2019 Main Street America Accreditation Program for meeting the standards of performance in 2018." So, all that effort and all the work that was done last year, we brought in a consultant, and as I can remember, it was the coldest day, uh, of the entire year, um, and we, we talked to a, a number of focus groups, uh, we talked to the DDA board, we talked to some elected officials who attended, uh, we talked to, uh, business owners and committee members and volunteers, uh, and we had a list of questions for them. So, um, it's quite a robust process, and, uh, you guys are doing incredible things with your downtown, and your downtown is award-winning. Uh, at our, our latest, uh, main event award ceremony, uh, on May 9th last month, um, I don't recall exactly what award it was, it's the Game Changer Award for one of your events, uh, which is tied up. So, um, on behalf of Main Street Oakland County, you know, Works Patterson, the county executive, we congratulate you on your efforts. Um, so, I'll come up, and if council would like to maybe even stand up or come down, whichever you prefer, uh, we'll take a quick photo, so, is somebody in the audience willing to take a photo? Okay, perfect. Do you want to yell something?
Of course.
Who's the chair? Who's the, you know?
Uh, no.
Should we hold on a little more?
Perfect. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was pretty lovely to hear. Really was, I got to tell you.
I remember I was there, and we enjoyed two sessions. I'm happy that was perfect. I appreciate it. Item number 10 is our public comments, and this one will be on agenda items only, so please step forward if you have something to share that is on our agenda. Later in the agenda, we will have public comments that are not agenda items. Okay, Gary Dunn. We will move on from there to, um, consent agenda is item number 11, there is not any inner consent of agenda for this month, and number 12 will be our committee person, oh, I'm sorry, our committee updates for our trustees. Do you want to start on your side?
Fire authority board to have meet this last month for the bonfire, so that's a variable. Planning commission did not meet for still having the, uh, stage of the draft approval for the master plan.
Any updates I have will be, uh, talked about further in the agenda, but I did want to talk about the other committee vacancy on the personnel committee, in which trustee Robinson, um, about a month ago, announced that he would be stepping down, and he has since, um, stayed on for an additional couple weeks. And, uh, for that, that being said, I think there's a, a pretty big void now within the personal, personnel committee as it relates to experience and whatnot, so, I'd like to motion to put Kelly Skorica back on the personnel committee, she brings a lot of, uh, the past experience, she has a past history, and, uh, she definitely has, uh, working knowledge of, of what we've done in the past, and, uh, I'm sure she can help move it forward.
Support. Is this, is that something that we...
I was gonna say, that's not something that we would make a motion on?
The president truly presents, and then we approve you.
It would be a recommendation and appointment on that, but I definitely...
Just, I go back to, uh, general rules of make sure we're following the procedure.
Yeah, if you remember, though, you did approve the per, uh, policies and procedures, and within that policy and procedures, it does state that you have to approve it, so I did hear your motion, and I did also hear your support.
There is a recommendation and not an approval from that point, and I definitely, um, understand that that needs to be done at our July meeting, but at this point, we haven't even decided what we are doing manager-wise, and then we need to have a meeting for that, and we will have somebody in that position, so thank you for that.
We are in court right now, and a motion has been presented, and it has been...
It's not a proper motion if it's not, like, if it's a... We can't, um, to make an appointment of somebody else, and, yeah.
It's been, it's been over a month.
But, so what's taken... The council does not directly have the authority to directly motion to approve somebody into that position, we have to have that person recommended for the appointment by the village president, and then we approve that regulation of the appointment. That's the proper procedure according to our village rule.
It's been quite, quite a little late, and we're in the process of trying to secure a new village manager, so I would say that.
Correct, and I understand that. Um, our rules and procedure states that the council representatives on the various boards, committees, and councils will be appointed by the village president and approved by the council, they shall be members of the council.
So, you don't have any recommendation that is...
I do, yes, I do, we are, do not have that on our agenda, and that will be on our July agenda, and we will be able to address that.
Two months later, we're still looking for a, uh, village manager, and yet we have a, no, no recommendations from our president for that replacement.
Correct, we put off five very important things last month that are more important this month, and I felt that was not important to place on our agenda at this time. We put off very important things last meeting, that was one more thing, and this is too bull as it is.
We put off those, uh, items on the agenda because of the fact that we have such an overburdened agenda as it was, believing that we were going to go ahead and interview two candidates, and, and then also do close session afterwards, which, nothing happened with that. Well, I would like to point out at that last meeting, that you said we were overburdened, that we still had it with an hour and a half and four-hour allotted, three-hour time period, so we got done in an hour and a half, if we had kept more of those items on the agenda, we could have used more of our time, and then able to get some of those off the agenda and not have such a burdened, this type of... But at the same time, when we made that motion and everything, we didn't know that we weren't going into close session to discuss, I mean, we left, we left it down to hand for the last, you know, couple weeks.
So, we'll wrap back to our committee updates, and the recommendation was made for Kelly Skorica for personnel. And I'll have that on there, is there anything else that you would have do for committee updates?
No, okay.
Mark, anything?
Excuse me, I'd just like to, um, indicate that the Historical Society met on June 11th, and the blacksmith shop is breaking ground tomorrow, Tuesday, June 20th, uh, June 25th at 10:00. Of course, weather permitting, that is supposed to be beautiful tomorrow, so that shouldn't be an issue, and we're underway, I didn't have blacksmith shop, the trees have been removed, um, put enough places out at the park and rec, um, and that's, oh, then, Liz and I will be meeting with IT to go over some recommendations for the computer upgrades that are dated in the office, and we'll be meeting hopefully this week, if not next week, as well as investigating, um, the possibility of some storage, the computer equipment storage closet that needs attention, equipment is piled, laptop of equipment, of course, you know, in particular around, so, we'll be investigating how we can, um, get that equipment in a better, simple manner.
Okay, and so that'll be the website IT committee? The, okay, so that is the village staff and trustee committee, so please let the staff know.
I stayed with Liz, there was an idea.
There'll be Liz and...
So that's exciting. That's all I have for now.
A lot of vendors gave really positive feedback, and I'm too disappointed with it. It will be back.
And we definitely appreciate serving there. Thank you. Next up is our new business, and that will start with the fiscal year 2018, 19 budget amendments. Could you please have Doug come sit over something down? There's any questions or comments on there?
I guess, Doug, I have a question, because I know basically we have to make sure we don't have negative balance in any of these things, and we've got to make adjustments to cover. I did wonder, there was one item under the table, and I didn't know if this was not included in the adjustments, because it was just offsetting things, but it was, there it is. The NSP grant revenue, we increased, we included 28,800, but then also on...
We put it in, we took it out. Because we received the money from the title company when the house sold, then we turned right around, and we expensed it, we gave it to Open Park.
Okay, because I saw the two different lines, and they look like they canceled. I didn't know if we needed to do that.
They canceled each other out.
So they just canceled, and that's why I didn't know that. Okay. I guess that was the only thing I had really to question.
Any further questions? Is that it? Make a motion for the budget adjustments.
Make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget adjustment as presented. Mr. Thor.
Motion by Councilman Ashman, supported by Councilman Batsu. Do we want a roll call, or is it planned agenda? It's not really a matter of, I think we'll do a roll call, just to be sure. So budget. All right, so let's roll call that for a second. Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skornica?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Batsu?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
Motion, Bryce, six zero. Item B will be the air commission at the Old Town Hall. That's simply the suggestion to see that's something we have budgeted for the next year, 1920, which starts in July, and looking to see if that's something that we can schedule for July and get that going. Is there any concerns, questions, issues, anything?
We've been talking about this.
Right, staying with the same company, and we've checked, and we budgeted correctly at this point.
Actually, we got a really good price on it, so...
So permission to go ahead and do that in July, July one. All right. And item C was the playground at Crosman Park, just to note, and I did, I apologize as I'm looking at it now, I do have an email to forward on to you. We've had a resident ask verbally, and then we did have an email received, looking to see if it's something that we could look into and to improve the park, to modernize it, if that's not something that was in our budgeting right now. Is there something that we could do to raise funds or to get it together or something like that? So I just wanted to bring it to people's attention. At this point, we can kind of brainstorm and keep...
I know we're going to discuss it a little bit further, but we have issues that we have to address with the budget and all that, too.
Correct, right. Like I said, just to get it out there, and I will send out that email, I apologize. I did respond to her to say thank you for bringing it to our attention. We would definitely, you know, at least put it on our thoughts. All right, that leaves us with item D, which is our local road improvement pilot program.
So as you know, we were awarded the grant, and we are ready to move forward with the contract. I just need council approval to go ahead and sign that contract. And then Bob is ready to move forward with purchasing the material and get, he would like to get going on that as soon as we can get the equipment here, so I would like approval for the purchase of the materials.
All right, so we're looking for the first motion is to sign the agreement.
I'm making a motion...
Go ahead.
I'm making a motion to approve and authorize the village clerk to sign a local road improvement action from pilot program, pass participation agreement, project number 2019-14. Support.
Any questions?
One thing I would like to add to that motion would be not to exceed the 4554, but another question was, I thought this was already done, because in the June 1 citizen, it says that this was already adopted.
We approved the application process. Now it's time, we've been awarded the contract, now we have to sign it.
Right, right, right. But according to the, it says, I guess it's like to find out this information, we were awarded it to find, to find out through the citizen before we discussed it in our meeting tonight, I thought, I'm not sure how this, how that was reported to the citizen, and that's out there, we hadn't even talked about it or signed and may executed any resolution when it states that there was an adoptive resolution, when in fact, we haven't. So how did the citizen get contacted?
Because we gave bill permission to apply for it. It came back that we have received it, the email went out to us, the citizen saw it on the public site of Oakland County, and contacted asking for the information and what this was. And then you receive it, you then approve it and accept it, which is what we're doing right now, so that's the right order. The 4554 is, it doesn't, it will exceed that, because we're putting more into that, so I don't think it should say not to exceed it.
It will now, because you're, because it's paper materials, but before it was 4554, not 54.
Well, it was up to, I think, the original motion, so we have to, the minimum is what we have to put in.
Right, 5054, right.
It can't be up to. We've exceeded it every year.
Right, we have to, well...
So literally approved anywhere.
What's in the, what do we put in the budget?
To sign, the first one is to sign the contract, is what we're proving first.
This would be part of the local...
The local problem.
Yeah, so I'm not sure what it is.
Okay.
And it's, it'll probably go towards...
Assuming that you're, I mean, you can't guarantee grants, I understand, but that is kind of already kind of coming in, but...
I know Bob was talking, correct me if I'm wrong, Church Street, and then depending on what was left, the rest of what was done last year?
No.
Bill from last year, that's what it was. I just kind of remember where. All right, so we have a motion on the table, some things, supported by Councilman Batsu. Can you have a vote on it, please? Call it, paper.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and the motion carries six zero. The second item on that will be the authorization to purchase materials for that.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the village clerk to purchase practice building materials associated with the local road improvement managing fund pilot grant funding project in the amount not to exceed 6860. Support.
Any questions on that?
How did we arrive at the materials costing that much? Is that what we're giving?
No.
Okay, how did we arrive at materials?
That's three, I actually have the five. That is cracked saving material at 98 cents a pound, that's 6,750 pounds of material, plus $245 in freight, and inter-radiator machine, free of charge for as long as we need it.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Councilman Ashman, supported by Councilman Robinson. Can I roll call one more, please? Skornica?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you. And I have a curious six zero as well. Next up is the joint collaboration meeting for July. This one is our turn. Planning Commission had their turn, DDA had their turn, and now it's our turn. I know we discussed doing that after the budget, so now the budget is approved. So my thought process was after our July meeting, so we have everything together on our July meeting, and you can tell me if that's too late, but I was thinking like the 29th, 30th, 25th, something like that, after our meeting. Any feedback, thought, ideas?
I don't have my calendar. Probably just a lot of data.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, that's why I said it was, ideally, like I said, after that, so maybe 29th, 30th, 25th, and just kind of give feedback on what you think. And we'll have that budget, and so everybody will kind of be able to look at the budgets. I know we've been wondering what DDA and Planning Commission have on the table after the master plan and the budget is, and this is the time for us to come together and get that vision paper down, so. Okay. 14A, master plan approval.
And it does seem that they did get the changes to the maps, including correctly living the park, and they gave the bill, it's relatively reasonable, the same reasons as these. Glad for that.
So I just wanted to comment on this, is that we received this Friday evening, we've been waiting for it for, I don't know, what's that, several weeks, three weeks, maybe? So we get it in our pocket, not even in our pocket, in addition, late Friday, and to review a 90-plus-page master plan for the weekend, to have, be prepared to vote on it today, I don't think it's appropriate to expect council people just to put off whatever they had plans to review it. I believe it should be a special meeting, that in the same way we reviewed the master plan from its origin, we all have our notes, and all we have to do is make sure that our notes match up with the edited version, final version is, and upon doing that review, I think we can approve it.
Actually, in this whole process, I have, not in every revision I get, I have to compare it to all the notes that I have to make sure that the changes were in there and the formatings that we already called under change. So if they didn't change anything else, I mean, it shouldn't have taken, it's a 90-day page, but we probably have already reviewed 90% of it in the past, and we only need, we should only need to review the 10% differences that we requested from the previous copy. So I would have hoped that everybody would have had time to review that 10% differences prior to this meeting.
We did receive this in April. The only thing that has changed is Brandon's schools in the maps, so we've had over two months to review this. And any questions, you're more than welcome to look through and respond to Planning Commission. They have had no response. I double-checked with Lee, was there anything that he was waiting on from us? Nobody has responded to him. I think it's not a good idea to spend taxpayer money to sit down at a meeting when this is something that if you have any questions, you bring to Lee, and then we have approved, again, it's been over 60 days, that we've had this exact copy. Nothing has changed.
Nothing's changed.
Nothing has changed, except the lately in the maps currently and the...
There have been things that have changed.
Everything else had already been corrected.
It's more than just the maps that were changed, though.
We have the new maps, and I think there was like maybe two minor corrections that have been...
Brandon's schools and Saper.
There were more than two minor corrections that were in the master plan there.
There were, but we also have received updated versions with those changes that were already compressed.
We've received numerous changes, and for me at least, it was pretty hard to draw it backwards forward. And I personally don't see it quite enough, spending a little bit more of my time going to do it accurately. The first time and the last time, we double, we're not under the gun, and this is important to the village. So I'd like, I'd like to look at it a little bit more myself. It's a lot, it's a lot, it's a lot of...
So is there anything else needed by council's wishes to be able to finish this, and to have this voted on in July? Anything they're waiting on or would like to see, so we can make sure that information is given to you?
Maybe we have a special meeting for it, and...
Good. Next week. Are you going to review it? And come to the Planning Commission again and get your questions answered.
So the whole point of reviewing is to make sure that it's approved, when we did approve the changes, that they are, the changes are made. So in the event that there are corrections, at what form would we do that to get the corrections fixed?
Well, if you did see something, you would report that back, and it would be prepared, and then it would come to the July meeting, correct it, and we would see that.
Well, what person did Planning Commission approve?
The one that we addressed to support April.
Because, you know, with these maps, you know, that, you know, that we've got new copies, it's like, what did the Planning Commission, what version?
Those changes, I think, were already requested in that before it went over to...
Did Planning Commission see the changes to the maps that we requested, and the trouble you approved it?
Yeah, that was different from what Planning Commission had a piece back then was, and I'm not even sure if we might have probably made note of that, was relaying to state that it's the order of the wild by presentation part, kind of like that. And I don't think there would be any concerns with that.
I'm a little concerned, because as she was asking the question, you were shaking your head no, so...
As of April, it had not, when we received it. And now that we've received it, we also, I also got the email from Planning Commission, the same maps.
Yes, the Planning Commission has not received their copy, though. I was going to say, because we just received our final copy Friday, then how, what did they look at when they approved it? They didn't have a final copy.
They haven't approved yet. You guys have to go and send it back.
No way they sent it off. They're waiting on us.
No, when our changes sent back to Planning Commission.
I think it currently come wrong, but I think what we had approved was Liz had been keeping track in her own document of all the changes and updating everything like that, and we were waiting until all that was sorted out and finished before sending that back, and that's kind of the update to that on the birth and list of that. So that's what I'm...
So Planning Commission, they approved, the Planning Commission looked at the noted copies.
We approved the noted copy that Liz subsequently submitted to the council, said this is...
They don't, they have, so they, so they looked at the changes that we made, that they have not seen a final copy, like what we received Friday.
No, that's... And then I believe that these maps are not correct, though, because when we reviewed these maps in our special meeting, we did talk about all these trails through town, and we talked about...
Trail versus sidewalk.
That's right.
And it still says trail.
Very simply, just looking at the maps, they were not updated based off of what we agreed to as a whole, council as a whole.
Which maps?
Okay, well, one of them that I'm looking, mobility plant, it still has, it's still wrong.
And that's not even looking at...
And recreational opportunities, that's still wrong. And that, that's my fault. I dropped the ball on the map portion of the trail versus pathway. Okay.
And that's the whole purpose. So my recommendation is that we do have a special meeting so that we can knock this out, because if we just piece it, one meeting and one person doing one thing, if we come together as a group, we have another review, and as a group, we say, okay, we finally got something here, and then we move forward, I think that would be better than getting specific onesie, twosie, piecemeal trustee comments, and then we're moved back to where we're at tonight, talking about changes that still need to be made.
I feel a special meeting is in order for this. This is very important, and I just want to correct, so.
All right.
Is this something we can consider for a downward joint meeting, something we can have?
We could do it, people like have a 6:30 or something, or I think we'll take two, you know, to do a back-to-back. All right. So look forward for scheduling for that. Item B will be our Ortonville Downtown Development Authority fiscal year budget for 2019-2020, and you'll receive that in your May packet. You got a chance to look through that, if you have any questions, you got a chance to ask now.
Or board members.
We, pardon?
Or the board.
Or the board members, and I actually meant they have Bailey.
Oh.
And we are going to be able to kind of compare it on some use this to our July meeting, and kind of see what the projects and things like that from there, too, so keep that available for the joint meeting.
So I do have some questions.
Somebody want to step up? I'm going to be sure something...
Changes in direct to the DDA. So I, I'm looking at your proposed budget for 2019-2020, right? And the proposed budget is 100,000, 101, almost 102,000 pounds, right? So if you compare it to the... Or the board members, and I actually meant the Bailey.
Oh.
And we are going to be able to kind of compare it on some use this to the July meeting, kind of see what the projects and things like that from there, too, so keep that available for the joint meeting.
So I do have some questions.
Somebody want to step up? Can you introduce something?
Oh, changes in Director of the DDA. So I, I'm looking at your proposed budget for 2019-2020, right, and the proposed budget is 100,000, 101, almost 102,000 dollars, right? So if you compare it to last year's proposed budget, we're talking about the revenue side of that, all right? Last year's revenue proposed budget was 99,166. You came in short, all right, which means you came in and you overspent for that budget, right? Correct? So you came in, so if you, you had a budget of 99, you had an actual revenue of 86, if you, if you went and looked at your, your previous year's budget, it showed that you were negative 11,000 dollars, is that right? For 2018-2019?
We spent 14,000 less than what we received at the time of this document being printed. So you take, you take that kind of reddish column, and follow it to the second side, it'll show that our net income or loss is 14,000, 104921.
So we're. I just want some clarification on the column. So right now, you have an active month 531, you have a year-to-date balance 531, and then you have another available balance, all right? The, at the very end of your spreadsheet, it shows a negative 11,657 dollars.
You might be looking at our income and expense report as opposed to the budget.
That's what we received.
There is an adjustment.
Yes, I have. That's all. This is your budget, not your expenses, right? This is your budget?
Right. That is, yes.
Okay.
So I guess my point is, so when you go into the next year's budget, 2019-2020, you look at your performance of your 2018-2019 budget. From the pluses and minuses, you make adjustments moving forward, right? So is it true that in 2018-2019, you fell short of the revenue expectation?
That is true.
By how much?
The month's not over with, so I can't give you an exact number right now, but I can give you a large chunk of where we fell short. One was the Brandon Township Public Library opted out of our tax capture. That started in the December, in December of 2018, that tax bill that went out, and that was 56 and change, 5,600 dollars and change, that we would have received had they stayed in the tax capture.
But that's why you took that money anyways, no? You got to get it back?
No, the 2018, they requested to opt out, and working with the township, they were granted that.
From that one?
Said, said they were granted.
From that.
What is that, they were granted by?
Turned off the spec.
All right, but I don't, we never got the money.
For 2019. So that, that would have been a, one of the larger items as far as the revenue side, where, where we didn't receive that chunk of revenue.
So with that, I have a quick question. Now, it's my understanding also that they want to go back on the past year or years, and also recover that as well, or, so what kind of positions does that, what you guys in?
We're researching.
Is that written in this budget, in the proposed budget? You have to pay that back, or no?
It is not. It hasn't, it hasn't been, it hasn't been.
Decided.
We're still trying to figure out who rules it, is the, is the question. Who would rule that we would have to do that, because the, the DDA law, as it was updated, doesn't, there's some vagueness as to how it's carried out. It states that the library can opt out of it, and it's, it gives a fairly vague description of the fact that they, they might be able to go back and request prior, but it doesn't, it hasn't state that they are able to, so it's all opinions at this point.
Yeah, I don't know that it's opinion. The way I understand it was that the state did take it back, and that the library was supposed to be able to say, hey, stop it or whatever. They were not allowed enough time, based off the timing of that decision from the state, to, to, to a point where you've already, you already took the money back, took the money before they had a chance to even reply, which they didn't have enough time to do.
Well, it's discussed.
We don't, we don't.
We don't take the money.
Yeah, listen.
So we receive it through the government entities, through the village, through the township, through the county.
So the townships.
The township paid you that money.
Correct.
And in January, the law went into effect, and December, they did not pay it. I hope you did not receive it.
So is there a potential they have to pay it back?
Well.
They came up with a proposal by 30 minutes, right? But that hasn't been determined that they're going to, so there's, there is a possibility, because right now, you know, you guys, based on what I read, if I understood, that you're working out a proposal with the library in lieu of paying it back, that you have, basically you're going to advertise for them, their programs and things like that, that basically it will advertise for you, but have to pay it back.
So they agreed to that?
No. No, that's just what was discussed.
So, so we're, we're working on a solution with the library. Now it's between the library and the DDA, the township has stepped aside. I'm assuming both sides are spending attorney's money to try to get back money. This is frustrating, because it's, there's in a way that.
But, so the potential expense is not in here?
Correct.
But there's also potential revenue expense, meaning that it's, right, I mean, you're forecasting some money coming in that you don't, not sure that you're going to get, right?
Not from the library.
No, 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 I'm talking about for other revenue sources.
Oh, oh, okay.
Right, so if you're going to forecast potential revenue coming in, wouldn't you also forecast potential costs that could come in, hit you in your budget?
That would not come out of this budget. 2020 is when the library recommended, if they choose that. Starts in 2020, not 2019.
But this is a 1920 budget.
And this, the library.
To your point, Anne, we have always put in here in the tax return sections, we've always put in there a contingency for having to return some tax revenue. There's a $500 figure and a $750 figure. That would be tax revenue we return. So we do take that into account in our budget each year. Some years it's, we've had to, other years we haven't. And additionally, we also, we also indicate the expense side items that may have to be pared down as a result of possible income not coming in.
Has the library stated why they're now doing this?
Is there a fiduciary responsibility?
Yeah, but I mean, where's their budget as opposed to, you know, DDA's budget?
We'll just, they're operating under their fiduciary responsibility. I think it's best to. Yeah, yeah.
So, so line number 248, S, 403, S, 400, it's the county and Brandon Township taxes.
Yes.
For 2018-19, you budgeted $39,000 revenue, and you came short the 30,000. Is that where that money was from?
Yeah.
All right. So then. I, I believe your budget is over, over budgeted roughly $20,000. I think your budget should be more in line with $80,000. I don't think 101,000 is a true number. I think next year you're going to see a negative 11, or a negative number like you did previous year on, I think you already stated, based off of what I see. I mean, you're, you're kind, you're estimating what your revenue is going to be, and it's kind of, I would say, off, I don't, but you're estimating what that's going to be, and to me, you would want to, instead of overestimate what your budget should be, because so you don't overspend, you would be conservative.
Are you referring to the tip capture, the tax dollar capture that we're receiving?
That's the revenue that he's referring to.
Is that what you're referring to, this first stated?
The whole, your whole revenue. So you have a revenue of 100, probably 102, 102,000 dollars, sorry. I believe that number should be more in line with $80,000.
Okay, so we, the last revenue line item is a transfer from our fund balance, nearly $13,000. So that's currently resources that we do have available to us that we are committing to this budget.
What's your carry forward?
It's the top number.
Okay, 29. Okay, 29, 781.
Yeah.
So I have a question on.
That, that's have a 531, right? Does that have a 531 to 29,000?
Yes, we haven't used any of that for this, what you.
It's a 531 here, it shows that you have 53,000. Actually, it ends with 52,697, and this shows 29. Would those two match?
Not necessarily.
You know, popping about, so if you have your 110, make 31st, so that, that's 52,000, and you're, you're saying the carry forward is 29,000, right? Why would those match? Am I looking at it wrong? I don't, I mean.
Well.
So if they're both dated 531, how much do both, what do they have? Huh? Right here. So 531, 531, 52, 52,000, and then you have a carry forward of 29,000 here. So if this is 5, that's a 531, would these two match? Shouldn't these two match?
This includes all of our bank accounts, and the honor is dedicated to Friends of Amis, 11,25684.
About Friends of Amis stuff.
It is, but the DDA board also is a Friends of Amis board, so this document covers both organizations.
So where is it?
They just, they stopped writing it out, you know, just for reporting purposes, because I think that, I think that should be separate since.
So the treasury reports to us for both of them, so that we were able to.
So writing them out.
That's, because the Friends of Amis is only 11,000 dollars, so if you even take that off, it's still 41,000 dollars, so it's either 41,000 or 29,000, right?
Yeah. The 29 figure is.
They're both dated 531. Huh?
The 29 figure is a figure.
So will it start at the end?
Oh, no, it could be, right, because I told you, we're, we've received 14,000 more dollars than we spent this year as well.
This year?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's, I guess that, the 29,000, I, I guess I, to me, if you got two financial documents, both dated and 531, one says 29,000, the other says it's 41,000, the two should.
We're not counting, we're not counting this 14,000 as part of the fund balance yet, until the year ends. Then I will go into it if we don't need it prior to, prior to the end of this year.
So this is a true, a true carry forward number then?
Well, it would be that plus the 14, if we don't use it. It would be the 29 plus the 14.
So basically, you just put that, in a sense, this could be considered place load, if you know this is carrying forward plus whatever income you have this year.
Right.
And then it'll get adjusted to reflect the actual carryover balance.
Correct.
But, all I'm saying, I mean, it's, it's seeming to say this is a carryover. If it truly that, is, should this be a carry, should there be a carryover number, or do these numbers match the same in time, 531?
Will in year end.
Once they're, once it's audited, they'll all match for sure, but I'm saying the discrepancy is that 11,000 in the Friends of Amis account and the 14,000 in excess that we've taken in this year and have not spent.
All right, thank you.
Another question on the, which is night out revenue, where it's projecting 2,500 dollars, and the note says estimate based on previous years, and it's, there was zeros in the previous years, so really that, donations, isn't that your goal?
That's, that's based on last year's.
Last year's.
Because we did bring in 2,250 dollars, 90 cents, which is night out last year.
You had contests and other support. What's the other, the 500 dollars?
Just general donations. We receive funds from the groups that have a sign on our welcome sign, the two signs in the village. They voluntarily pay a maintenance fee for the upkeep on those signs, which we took over from the Chamber of Commerce when it closed up. So the organization pays us a small fee for that. That's one example.
Okay. The $8,000 for the partners program sponsored the farmers market, is that, or will, should that be reduced, since we're not doing a farmers market until next year?
Which was gearing up for that, will still be in this budget.
Will still will be.
And so that is sponsorship dollars. And so the, the partners program was launched this year, so it was the first time we did it, and we allowed businesses, organizations that normally sponsor throughout the year an opportunity to sponsor every and all of us, and it's slowly taking hold, but we expect it to continue to make some progress, and we have not done any soliciting for the farmers market or sponsorship dollars, so we anticipate that that fund will grow.
I have one other question. Where's the, the Friends of Amis donation on this?
On the expense side, in the main street committee expenses, there are three categories where we list event donation. One is summer events and activities, one is Christmas in the village, and one is new, new, or one is witches night out expense.
Which, which line is that?
So it's.
It's the summer events.
24, 775, 790, 010. And then two down from that is Christmas in the village, and under that is witches night out.
Event donation, that's what it says. Your system's firework, it says event donation, right?
Mine says summer events, fireworks. Is that 790, 010?
I couldn't find my calendar. Yeah. No, Mike, yeah, you're at the center, 010. Yeah, yours, I didn't see fireworks on it, just.
It doesn't say fireworks. It says summer events and activities, but.
On the description here? Right.
We were referencing that.
Right.
Line item.
Again, one last question then, on line item, it says for market manager, 956.330, annual contract of man, of the manager is $4,000. What is that $4,000 for? It looks like it's new. It doesn't look like it was there last year, and it's an expense for this year.
It's the contract for the staff person, the market manager. We're not employed, we're contracted with them to do the task, and to do the task of managing the market, of talking with the farmers as well, and us coordinating. How is it going to have to do with that?
So this is, that's a new expense.
Correct.
I don't see it left. You didn't plug it for it last year, is my mistake.
The last time was when we had Beats, Beats &amp; Eats, when that individual had a contract to run Beats, Beats &amp; Eats. It's a same category, but you're right, we have not used it in the last three years.
And then who is the market manager for this first 1920?
Her name is Candace Inum.
Does anybody have any questions? DEA budget.
Tony, you look like you have a different copy, so what, what's your bottom line for, for the budget? Does your dollars match, does it, what copy do we receive?
On the bottom line for?
The, the budget?
The fund balance?
The, the fund balance will work for the, the expenditures?
I don't know what this one was. This one was our maybe, or maybe.
And can I just suggest that we put a date, like when these were created or something, you know, a date on the bottom?
Yeah.
Who was submitted by?
It looks like.
That's okay.
Just for that.
Can I interpret a motion, please, for the DEA two thousand nineteen twenty budget?
I just have a, I have a question. So, based on this budget, you would have one to three months in operating expenses, right? Based on this budget, you're, you would have at least one to three months of operating expenses in your, in your fund balance at any given time? Five to twenty percent of your budget expenses?
Oh, based on use of the, the fund balance.
Yeah, would you have one to three months then?
The, the allocation that, to use the fund balance in this budget before you is contingent upon a project that we would put a considerable amount of funds towards. We've held up determining what that project is, again, waiting for the master plan to be completed, to identify a project that we can get behind and support. So, last year we did the same thing, didn't have a completed plan, so we didn't spend that, those funds. So, last year, and again, for this new budget year, we're expecting to support one of those projects.
And that's why the fourteen thousand.
That's why we would be cutting into the fund balance. One other item of note, there is a information in our packet from one of our board meetings, which talks about the new DEA Act. Each year, the DEA has to account for the fund, tax dollar funds that it has received, and show the state where those funds have been allocated. If we haven't allocated all of those funds, we have to give reason why. We can hold funds, but it has to be dedicated to something, and there has to be a timeframe I know of. So, and, and that, that has been an expectation that we know have been, has been coming. And one of the recommendations to the DEA before I got here was to begin to spend down that reserve fund. Not all the way, we can have a little bit of something to commit to a project, or, or for the rainy day, so to speak. But we have to, we have to account for the funds we are receiving now moving forward, and show that we're using it for the purpose of the DEA.
So if you have a project you would have to allocate, you say, okay, we can build a balance to pay for this project, then you can.
Very definite balance. Five thousand a year for three years.
As long as you have a defined, the master plan party. And a defined time to plan, right, towards. And I would say, right now, it looks like the fund balance is roughly around thirty thousand, the total budget is roughly a hundred thousand, seems like you have close to thirty percent. Total budget and a fund balance, so I think that would.
Yeah, you didn't utilize the fund management.
And so I think that would be, the hell, I was asking about the one to three months for the operating expenses. Is that where it's at?
Yep.
So one last question. So other than the thousand dollars for the event cost for the fireworks, is there any other dollars that come out of the DEA budget? Whether it be donations to the DEA that are put or funneled into Friends of Amos?
No.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions? I would like to make a motion to approve the Oracle Round Town Development Authority fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget and present.
Support.
Motion by Councilor President Price, supported by Councilman Hayden. All in favor?
No.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, motion carries five to one. Item C will be the former village manager wellness benefit. We have manager that has left as of May seventeenth, looking to do the wellness payment, payment for that. Recommendation for that, the personal committee met and suggested to do that. The total one, of the three month period, which would be.
Half, three month period.
Half, half of the three month period, which would be a month, yeah. So it was currently paid from the January first to March thirty first date. Now we're looking from April first to May seventeenth.
How much would that?
It'd be four hundred and fifty dollars.
It'd be a. And then the March, I'm sorry, April first to May seventeen is the request.
Yeah, and I know there was a question at some point here. Uh, level and point, and so this does follow our policy, right, and relates to.
It does.
Okay, all right. I know there was a question in the past for that, too.
Is there an active?
Yeah.
That's something you may want to consider. Make a motion to approve the payment of four hundred and fifty dollars wellness stipend to former manager spray. No, no.
Support. Could you reread that, please?
I was gonna say.
Because there's a little difference in what was that.
Um, I've got, suggested mostly to approve the four hundred and fifty dollar wellness stipend payment to former manager spray. It's recommended by the personnel.
We, we never, no, I didn't include that in my motion.
Okay, so how do you want me to write it?
To approve, to approve the payment of four hundred and fifty dollars of the wellness stipend to former manager spray. Actually, let me add from April first through May seventeen, two thousand nineteen.
Describe the digits.
Yeah, I'll write that.
Makes it very clear. These two.
I think it's important to get the wrong in there, so I changed those. Do you want me to reread it?
Sure.
Okay. Um, to approve payment of four hundred and fifty dollar wellness stipend to former manager bill spray from April one to May seventeen.
Would you mind two thousand nineteen?
I don't mind, thank you. I know Kelly mentioned that.
What was it?
Yeah, two thousand nineteen, I remember that. Yeah, I know you mentioned that.
All right, just give me a, you roll. Call them, please, that would be motion on the table by Councilman Scott, or by Councilman Watzu.
Price?
Yes.
Watzu?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Sarnaco?
Yes.
All right, motion carries six zero.
All right, and next up will be the mail street pain drain engineer estimate.
Now we have D.
Oh, did I skip one? Look at that, I wrote right through it. Let's go with the interim staff pay increase first, please, that's like a D. Right on top of it. All right, so we discussed a tad at the May and then the June tenth meeting. The request was made by council for information on their increased activities for the, in the, this manager not being in the position currently. And so, we would like to look into either or. I believe personnel discussed both, a maximum extra hours as well as pay increase, correct?
So when we discussed this, it was brought up again a couple of weeks ago, has, has either one of them had more additional hours? Because at that time, two weeks ago, you didn't, so that's what I'm asking.
I have. And we also have lost our janitor, which has now increased their hours as well. And do other duties have assigned?
Okay, and then I know, I don't know if this is the right time, but personnel also knew that this was coming up, so we thought we were going to have to put a manager, hire somebody for that position, so. So additional responsibilities, who's, who's from that?
Beth and I are, are doing the basics.
And then how many hours will we, will we, how many hours a week will we pay in previous janitor?
I don't know.
It depended on the week, somewhere.
Yeah, it depended on her time sheet, how often she got in.
Was it once a week, once every two weeks?
It was like once a week.
Yeah.
She would come in like maybe Sunday, for like three hours.
Okay, so roughly, maybe three hours a week at that.
Three hours to clean the offices.
So how many additional hours are you now both having to put in? I mean, with everything?
Yeah, I would have to look at my time card, I, I probably stayed late a few times and come in early a couple of times, so maybe in the last two weeks, a total of five or six hours, maybe.
And projected with taxes, what would that look like? Sean?
What was the question?
Projected with taxes coming out of July, what will that look like?
Well, the taxes come in at the same time, right? It's not like it's the same, it's nothing different.
And then extra duties on top of band-aid with positions, and was what I'm saying, that's within a couple of weeks.
So I think the last time we met, I think it was talked about that we were considering a, a temporary pay increase. And then, you're right, then we said, okay, to make sure that it's warranted, that you were going to come up with a list of items that are above and beyond what you're currently doing. All right, so, so we know what you're currently supposed to do, all right, what additional items, and I, that, I was looking for in the packet, what additional items? Is there a list of additional items that I missed?
No.
Right.
We got job descriptions, and that's.
Well, there were some things highlighted for each one, so usually.
Correct, the extra items that they do in addition to theirs. They checked off all the list of things that they do that is not there, and that was what was included in the June one.
In the June?
Right, but that was, I, I'll have to get my copy, but I guess I thought that was with, under the treasures, okay, the job checked off, yep, the treasurer does that, under the clerk, okay, under the job, yep, treasurer does that, or the clerk does that. And then see where additional roles there were.
They suggest, or they went here and checked out things that they would do, that the village president would do, or that the village manager would do, and they went down that list, and they did check theirs, their list as well. Some of the items off of clerk, treasurer will do as well, you know, et cetera, so they went ahead and checked out all of them. And then, like I said, all of the areas, and then for Bob, it was.
So we needed to check on, this is what this is.
And it, right, that are not their duties.
I did not, I was not aware that that's what these were.
And those items are not, you know, their specified duties.
Yeah, it didn't come with a.
That's why we had a special meeting to define the rules, so Tanya steps in as the village manager, so she should be taking on the manager stuff. So I guess what is it that you're taking on, or she has to take on that she's not?
Well, she can't be there to answer when residents come in and, you know, writing the ordinance letters, and I mean, I've written several ordinance letters. We take resident contact, both of us do.
The ordinance letters on the tracking report, is that what you're referring to?
That, yeah. Or when, when.
I didn't see any updates on that, okay.
Uh, there, there were.
Okay, okay.
When it's mentioned that you're needing it, you want us to look into something, normally you would give that to Bill. I've been doing it, so, I mean, we, it, it's just, yeah, I mean, it's more, if we don't, we don't have that person in the office.
Okay.
Also, basically, we've taken out forty hours and we divided it up, and they're burdened with it.
That's, that is one of the things we discussed, is that in the absence of those village manager, they are probably going to need to take a little extra time in preparing stuff for the council. Which is typically would be maybe considered part of their official duties, but the village manager needs to take up a lot of that activity. And we did also discuss that in the absence of village manager, we do have the amount of salary that would be dedicated to that village manager, we're saving that money. So having these guys do a little extra to keep on top of everything. We felt that a little bit of extra compensation would easily offset the amount of village manager paid, the interim total if you find a new village manager.
Because sometimes when that pay, or that bonus, or whatever you want to call it, sometimes, most of the time, it happens like after the fact, doesn't it? I mean, you don't really know, I mean, how long it's going to take to find a village manager, we could have, you know, somebody could have started, you know, today, or, you know, two weeks ago when we had an interview. But, you know, normally it's like, happens after the fact, and I guess I haven't seen anything that was defined of what additional is doing, and there's, and it looks like it's, you know, the basics are being done, and, and I know from, you know, taxpayers, it's like many times, you know, when you're working, it's like, and I'm not saying they don't deserve, I'm not, don't misunderstand, but as taxpayers sitting at home, that when you always have to take on additional responsibilities at some point in time, and, you know, that you don't get extra there, too. You have to be mindful of, it's taxpayer money to, to do that.
And I think that they are serving our taxpayers.
And I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying that they're not, don't misunderstand, I'm not, it's just.
Give them a little incentive to, you know, make sure they do it.
Right. No, I, I understand, I'm just looking at it from perspective of, you know, we're all sitting out there, and it's like, you know, gosh, you know, my boss has been gone for three months, and I'm taking on that additional role, you know, you don't get, you, you you know, they're not getting that, so it's like how many taxpayers are, are getting that, too, so just, just trying to think about that. And yet the Fridays are still continuing, I think, you know, unfortunately, it's been able to still maintain your rotating and having every Friday off, right? So, I mean, it's like, things are happening.
You know, I think, you know, at year end, when, when time comes for pay increases and things, I think that may be a good, a good time to.
Think about what they did.
Yeah.
But in that sense, was that, is that how we address that also before, I mean?
Yes.
Did we, we added additional reasons?
We did, we got, we got a nice phrase.
It was well remembered and well deserved, so.
Right.
So I don't think we could maybe consider a.
At that point in time, not in the middle of a transition.
I, I only have one additional question, I mean, I'm, I'm for it, but can we legally give them like midterm, you know, raises and all that? That's my concern.
Officers of the, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of.
Whatever we choose. It's not whatever we choose, it's like there is, I don't have the article, we need to be, you get to be mindful of pay increases in the middle of the year to officers.
And it's not without pressing another, there is, it's up to you, you go to certain types of situations.
It's not in our personnel, it's not in the general.
Hazard here, things like that, when you're doing duties that are above and beyond the normal response, other industries and stuff here, so it's not, I think that's necessarily unusual.
I understand, I understand.
The year's half over, pretty much. Yeah, it's just temporary, okay, from this point to this point, once the. Yeah, it's just temporary, okay, from this point to this point, once the situation is done, and then no longer than that, then.
Yeah.
Rather than having to go figure out after the fact, okay, what should we, because it was like two months, or it was four months, or whatever, if we just do it like this, then it makes it, they get paid upfront for the additional duties, and when it's done, it's done. I'd go either way.
I, in, in my industry, and you say that it's not uncommon, but typically, people do have to go above and beyond, fill gaps where needed, and, okay. At the end of the year, you sit down with your manager, in this case, it will be the new manager or the sitting president, and say, okay, look at me, here's what I've done to fill these gaps. And that would be the time to say, okay, yeah, you're right, clerk, you're right, village treasurer, you did pick up things, and therefore, we might increase or add another percent, or whatever it may be, to their pay, based off of the performance of filling those gaps. And typically, it's done after the fact, not before it's done, or while it's being done.
I have never seen somebody absorb a position and not get paid for it when they absorb a position. You have two and a half people doing a forty-hour job, you get paid for it when you do it. And in argument's sake, I'm getting paid for the hours I'm putting in, so why shouldn't they? They're putting in more hours than I am, doing a position that they are being penalized for until this is solved. It's not fair to make them wait.
Doing that.
Depends on the week.
I mean, on the average, how many hours are you putting in?
Seven to ten, maybe.
So, that's, are you meeting your plan then, the hours you go in?
No, it would be two to three hours as a meeting, so I would do it based, divided up by.
Okay.
So, basically, that just.
But you're being compensated through a system that we already have in place, two to three hours per meeting. We already have in place their wages, their compensation is, if they work overtime, they get comp for it, just like you work overtime, you get comp for it. But if you're just doing things in the normal course of your day-to-day job, and now, okay, you're doing a couple of activities within the hours you work, that doesn't justify getting extra pay. I mean, we sit there and review master plans over a weekend, beautiful weekend, and we didn't pay extra money for that? No, we're doing that.
But that's your job description, that is not their job description.
So, what?
That's totally different.
I.
If we choose to go on overtime, we will then compensate for one and a half times their standard rate. That is up to the approval of the village manager, and it is limited to emergency use, which is this case, it's, oh, I'm sorry, if it's other than manager, other than emergency use, it is approval from the manager first. So, a flexible schedule should be used rather than overtime, obviously, in order to fill that. So, what we're asking for is instead of doing time and a half, a dollar fifteen hour raise to say thank you, giving each of them up to five hours extra a week at their discretion. Not necessarily needed, as you can see, it hasn't been every single week, we are not going ten hours over. It just depends on what the burden is for that week. So, if we go by this, we're going to be paying out a lot more, and that's going to be acceptable, and that's going to be expected. What we were trying to do is say, hey, let's put a band-aid on this and fix this in the interim, and say thank you for the work that they're doing day-to-day above and beyond that is not in their job.
I would also like to add another perspective to that, because we keep talking about, well, at the end of the year, we, we can give a pay increase based on the performance, take this consideration. But, you know, if the pay increase really is, that's a permanent increase of time. And that's one of those things where it's like, okay, yeah, if they did a good job through the year, they, they deserve a certain pay increase. This is a short time period that's going above and beyond, I think that is more of a, you know, like a, and I would, I would take a look at like, if I have a certain project, I might get, it might be a goal of mine, if I do a certain, perform at a certain level on a project, I might get a certain amount of bonus money. So, this is more like a bonus as opposed to, you know, a standard salary merit pay increase. So, it's really, and we don't really have the bonuses per se, other than the pay increase and the salaries now, because we got rid of that one thing that we had. So, I think this is, I would look at this as kind of a bonus, do we, do we wait until this is resolved, and then give a bonus after the fact, and calculate, what, what do we give as a bonus for their performance during this interim period? Or do we just give them a little increase during it to cover that interim period? Either way, I think it's, it should be considered separate from their normal salary increases.
The, the suggestive proposal says a pay increase as recommended by personnel committee, but I guess I haven't heard exactly what that was. What did personnel committee, what did personnel committee actually recommending, what percent, what? I mean, there's, there's, there's not a recommendation from personnel.
That was in the June 10th, that was a dollar fifteen hour and up to five hours each person.
No, this was from a hearing, no.
Discretionary.
No.
So, that's what the proposal is, a dollar fifteen hour and up to five dollars, or five hours each extra, just, just based on their discretion.
Okay, we discussed whether we should do this as a percentage or just a flat dollar amount, and in the end, we said, well, it probably may, it is easier just to give the flat dollar amount, because it wasn't that much difference in time, in terms of calculating that.
Okay, because, yeah, that's what I was just waiting for the recommendation, okay, so, it was a dollar fifteen hour, up to five hours.
And then for, for how long?
And up to.
And up to, right.
And for how long then, so when do we stop it?
When the president, I mean, when the manager is hired. It's interim, until the manager is hired. In the office, okay, first day, not hired.
Yeah, until they start.
First day of work.
So, the question really is, I don't think anybody's sitting here tonight saying that they don't deserve some sort of compensation, it's a matter of when, right? So, we either do it now, or we pay it later, and whatever.
Do we do it after the fact, and what lumps?
I mean, in my industry, and.
Other duties have assigned, it's like, you know, I, I mean, and I, and you can get it, I don't know, I just, um, how many of our taxpayers out there that are doing things because somebody's out of medical leave, and they've got to absorb extra, if that person comes back, and, and it's just, um, I'm just being mindful of that taxpayer that doesn't get that, and then we're, you know, using their money to do that. I'm not saying, saying they don't deserve it, but I think we can analyze it at performance review time.
So, in the meantime, we're going to default to overtime as compensated in that, correct?
Yeah, they, they need to work overtime for something that needs to be done, and absolutely.
But I think it's like that, I mean, I don't think that should be getting out of control, I think that should be managed, and, and I think that that should be approved, so that it's somewhat managed, not like, oh, I've got, but I, I mean, based on Liz and, you know, her saying it's like, it's, you know, around about five hours, and like I said, I mean, they're still taking their Fridays, so it sounds like it's very little.
Well, I believe they're choosing to come in earlier, stay late versus working in the day out. I mean, that's.
Well, the hour, Bianca still has to be, still has to be covered no matter what.
Right, one of them, but what I'm saying is, in order to keep your Friday off, you're doing extra hours here during the week.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think the performance and whatever they're doing today needs to be well documented such that when they do their review, it is part of the review, and they should be compensated as such, but not to do it prior to, that's my, my opinion.
So, they've had the review, and you would like to have their review reviewed to see if there's, if it's of merit? They had the review in May?
So, you're basically saying.
They had the reviews in May, so you want me to look through the review and see if it's a merit?
Wait until next year of May to.
Yeah, it's annual.
No, May was their annual, just in May. Nothing's been done since then.
What Dana's saying is that we have to wait until next year of May.
Right, like a merit, it's an annual, yeah.
Any type of compensation.
But we haven't even addressed this yet. So, we haven't even addressed the evaluation, personnel looks at the evaluation, decides merit based on this May, we haven't even done that yet.
Well, the manager does that.
Right.
And I thought he did, I thought he did evaluation at some point.
He did. And he brought it to us with a recommendation. We stopped and said, at this point, this is what we need to address, but we can go back and, and address that stuff, that's fine. So, that will be the next step.
But we approve a budget, we approve a budget for increase of et cetera, just because we approve a budget doesn't necessarily mean it's acted at with the time. But when come time, we, it's, and it's warranted, and I would suggest that, once we do hire a village manager, council, personnel committee comes together and say, okay, guys, we have a village manager, Liz and Beth did this, okay? Let's take forward to council, these are the extra things that they put forth, let's recommend to council that we compensate them now, after it's all said and done, not before, because you really don't know what's going to happen.
But isn't the compensation, well, getting paid your overtime when you're working your hours?
That is, it's, it's, the personnel committee is recommending above and beyond that.
Right, but I mean, it's like, they're getting, for the hours they're putting in, they're getting compensated, it's not, donated time is what Tanya has adjusted it forth, they said, she had said, well, they weren't, they weren't working anything, that, that if they chose to come in an hour or stay late, that goes on now. So, now that's not the case, so, but if the, the review goes May to May, then it's next May that it would be evaluated.
I think that it should be.
Because it just started, because it just started, our manager left in May.
Next May, so I, if you, if we choose to wait until we have the village manager, and then have a, have a personnel committee, once we have a new village manager in place, to bring a recommendation back to council, or compensation is good. I'd be okay with that, but I don't think it's fair to, or our village staff to tell them they have to wait almost an entire year to see something for their.
I agree with that.
Isn't that, because they get a merit though?
That's, that's reasonable.
I mean, merits are annuals.
That's reasonable to me. Reasonable to you as far as?
As far as waiting till the village manager comes in and then reviewing it and saying, this is what you're, this.
Taking into account.
Is the track record, yeah, in the meantime, there is overtime.
You don't, you don't get that, and that, and that, you know, you don't get it all.
All right, so we're, right now, I think we're saying that we're tabling this until, up until a village manager is in place, and then we'll bring this forward at that point.
We'll take it up with the first personnel committee meeting, once the village manager is in place, if that's okay.
So, we've got a personnel committee now, Larry?
I know of at least two people who are around it, so we'll see.
All right, item E will be the Mill Street Drain Engineer estimate. And what we.
Do we need a motion to table that, so that that's?
We never made a.
No, I have to have a motion.
When there's a motion on the table, you have to vote on it.
There was a motion.
There was a motion?
I know, I know, but do we need to, or should we put a motion out there that this is being tabled for further evaluation upon village manager?
It can stay on the unfinished business as is, and it's fine, it's up to you guys. There's no need to.
Well, I just, I think just to keep tagging it along on the agenda, it's like, but, okay.
Well, hopefully, we'll.
When you talk about the motion, you have to do with the motion, otherwise it's only.
Well, we could do a motion to refer this matter to the personnel committee upon the start of the new village manager. Support it.
Is that an actual motion?
I make a motion.
Go ahead, move that along with it.
Okay, I make a motion to have this, the interim pay, staff pay increase taken up with the personnel committee upon the start of the new village manager. Support it.
All right, motion to councilman Hayden, supported by councilman Oshman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six zero. Exit of Mill Street, Drain Engineer estimate. And you received a copy of that, and Dan, do you want to kind of give a little information?
So, this is an effort to improve the drainage across the park. We know that when we have heavy rains, the Crossman Park fills up very rapidly. There is a method to, to, that the DPW team has been doing to reduce that, the park from flooding, or at least to remove the water from the park, and that would be by putting a, a pump in the drain in the parking lot of the township office's parking lot, right up here, out in front of the building. There is a crock there that the water drains very well there, and if you look at the schematic, it is a pink circle. In the schematic that we have right now today, that's where they pump from, and what they're doing is pumping it across the parking lot and onto the street, so that it allows the gravity to down to further drains downhill, and then eventually through this way to the creek. In this diagram here, and I, I don't have any of the dollars, but what, what, again, and I don't know that we had this picture the last time we reviewed and talked about this, but we did walk it with Bob, and I'd say we, trustee, or President Bryce, myself, and Bob Hoxwell walked this area. It, there is a straight shot, and I, you know, if you look at it, it's a pretty straight shot to the creek from where it's, the pink circle is today. And then, the pink circle is what is being proposed to be an underground board, and then a pipe would be installed to the crock that's in the parking lot out here. And then, because of the height difference between the road and where that pipe would come out, that pipe would be exposed, right? It's not, we don't have to dig it up, certainly we'll have to clear that area, it is on a residence fee to property, all right? And from that, the, the pipe is expected to go out maybe halfway to the yard, and then, what, what, there were two things that were proposed at that time, remember, Tanya, is that one was Bob thought, okay, we put the, bore underground, connect to that crock, and then backfill that whole area next to the home, because it is, there is a little wetland there, and it's, it's a, it's very low line, so it makes sense to backfill that and extend the pipe out further, closer to the creek, right? And by doing so, it would, it would, it would be much cleaner. But initially, Row had an engineering diagram where it was not backfilled, right? And then they were going to extend the bio swale from where it exits all the way through the yard, so that it would be a quite lengthy bio swale. So, what Bob was going to do, and I'm not sure if Bob did it, or maybe you did, but we were going to go back to Row and say, hey, wait a minute, your drawing doesn't show what we understood it to be, right? And, and I thought that's where we left it, is that they were going to go back and say, because this is, this is not rocket science, this is gravity, you talk to Bob, yeah, you know, really, the engineering part would only be the bio swale, whatever requirement is there, take the, the water from the drain, end of the drain pipe to the creek. I don't know if that's engineered, or whether there's, you know, but I don't know, there's a whole lot of engineering that needs to go to that. So, could be it?
I don't know.
Yeah.
So, does, does everybody understand what is being looked at? So.
And then to piggyback on that, what the request is, the neighbor also is redoing their septic system at the same time. So, their engineer is working, our engineer is working. So, at this point, we've had the drawings complimented, and the next step to go back and change this, or to work with the engineer, will then be a fee. So, that's where we're at now, is looking to have the engineers work together to see how we can save each of us money and time.
Okay, at, at that same time, they've been more than generous, and, you know, they've been patient with us as well, and so, we, we don't want to lose that, and, you know, and I don't know what their window is right now, how soon, but it sounds like it has to be done right away.
Yes, sir.
I just, I just spoke today with a.
Thank you.
Would you mind introducing yourself?
This is Jayne, today Tracy Hirsty. I just spoke with a inspector from Alton Bunny today, like this morning, and he, he got a plan already for myself. So, he wanted to see if we could meet on a property to show him what the village's got, as far as engineering pipes and all those things, to get, work together and get something done. Because he's saying that it will, it will take like, it can take up to thirty days for them, and they're going to approve the plan that he's got over there, but he's going to move forward, because they, like, and I had this, like, last. But he's going to move forward because they, like, and I have these, like, large group of people, so we want to get that fixed on as soon as possible. So they, he's saying it's probably going to be done within a few weeks. So I, because I told him the situation too, it's kind of hard for us to have to take turns to shower, have to go out to do laundry, give me, we have to, we have.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta move.
So we have to move forward, yeah, yeah. So if, he actually asked me too, if I could get some names and numbers of somebody that he can talk to, and that we can probably meet over on the property, with the engineers too, some of the best, we can get going and get something done very quickly. Because pretty soon, I'm pretty sure neighbors are going to start.
So I think that's the deal.
No, that's what I was also going to mention. Jamie? Is your inspector Chris?
Yes.
So the system that's being proposed now, is it an engineered system now?
Uh, because of the elevations, he said it has to be an engineer system. With that bill is filling the area up, I'm not sure if it was gonna, if it's going to require it to be an engineer plan.
So you're saying that if you.
We didn't check, we didn't check with Chris basically, to see if the village is going to fill the area, if we can do conventional or it still have to be an engineer too. Because he said that out, the pipe that out, the village want to run to there, it has to be isolated from the superspace, basically.
Yeah, that's what I was, my next concern is where the village wants to come through, is that going to impact your.
We actually got.
I'd love you to put it in the subject.
We actually got enough room over there if we, I mean, we, like I said, we just got to work together and get something done. But I think it's room for everybody. Because my set doesn't require more than, I think he said 2,500 square feet? If we do like an engineer, engineers fill. But if we're going to fill that up, because I heard that those trees are coming down, and if we're going to fill that area, I think it would be enough room for the pipe.
So you could go, if we were to back, you choose to go the route of backfilling that area over the pipe once you extend it out, then it would, you would not need to be an engineered system?
Uh, we need, we need to check with Chris and then find out, because he's the inspector, he's the one that has to take it to the county. So he's the one that will let us know if we can go conventional or it still have to be.
If there's a, if there's a drain pipe going to creek, you can run immediately under that, which might be.
I think because the pipe might kind of have to be.
To ensure it's isolated from the septic. So it probably would be best if we get Chris out there along with both sets of engineers out at the same time to. How much are we paying? So once they get together, what is the dollar, what are we expecting them?
We don't know until they get together, because by working separately and obviously, as you said, overworking each other, we're both going to be paying. If not, we'll both see a change in price.
Yeah, I've spoken with Chris too, he's suggested maybe throw that out there for the village too. Then my, the village might want to hire it, that one engineer is working, I might say now, so can get the whole thing done and have one. That way it'll be just one person that's going to be involved in that team, so. And then if we just want to do.
Or which engineer? What engineer is it?
I don't remember her name, she's.
From Oakland County though, right?
Yeah.
Oakland County.
Oakland County representative.
So, because your property is not for sale? We would need to go through.
Not really, because we don't want to lose that piece of property over there. Because that's kind of like where the kids just play whenever.
Did you mention before about somebody approaching you about wanting to, if you wanted to sell your property?
What was that?
Did you mention about somebody approached you about selling your property for the village drain to be going through? So your property is not for sale for the villagers to buy, so we want to put the drain in there.
Yeah, we just don't want to lose that piece of property, because that property's going to be narrow and the other house will go down.
Okay, just want to think, so yeah, your property is not for sale?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I think we're all, you know, we wanted to help each other out and get them all rolling, so what have we got to do?
The other thing as well, on the opposite side, as you mentioned the park, we have a resident that sent us all an email as a concern. They're getting flooded on the other end as well. So both ends of it have an emergency, both ends of it need to be addressed. This is a constant coming from both sides. So definitely, let's get moving on this.
So, and then just one other, just, we did look at and talk about, talk about we being Bob Hoxwell, myself, I don't know if you were there at the time, Tanya, but what other options do we have? If we didn't go with this route, how else could we do it in a maybe more cost-effective way? But we would be tearing up the parking lot and trying to get to a drain that I believe is out in front of the feed store maybe? But so, I mean, going back through town, this is the most direct. So it would take, and then the elevation between the two, you're actually having a pump to pump off.
We're tearing off the whole village.
I know they do it now, but to do it on a permanent basis, it would be, and I talked to Bob yesterday, and he said, yeah, it could be done, it's just, you know, he said it would be more difficult, but yes, it could be done.
I like this gravity feed system, the more I've looked at it. I was online looking. Yeah, I think we should plow ahead and get it going. And I'm going to make a motion and I'm going to make a little modification to what this was.
A little modification or a big?
Yes, a little modification. Make a motion to approve Row Professional Services Engineer to work with engineer obtained by property owner of 33 Cedar Street and with the Oakland County Sanitarium, or Oakland County Health Department.
Sanitarium.
To draft a plan for village resident cooperation to be resolved drainage issue at Mill and Cedar Streets. I thought it was important to include the Oakland County Sanitarium. It's important.
Thank you very much.
Do we need anything from legal? So that, I mean, right now, it's like, yes, you know, he's the property owner, but should they ever sell, so that we have the agreement later on, so that it's all documented?
I think we will at some point, but once we get there.
Okay, so I just want to put that out there that we need to.
Yeah, I think we will.
Right now, we just need to find out what kind of plan.
Right, right, the plan, I understand.
Alright, so we have a motion by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Hushman. Any more questions? And all in favor? Oh, you know what? We don't have an amount of this will be a cost. Can we do it in real quick please?
Can we, another thing, because it is a cost, and right now we've got an open checkbook, right? So are we going to say cost to be reviewed and approved at a future date? Or are we, right now, we're just saying, hey, let's get the two to meet and let's look at the options and then.
Right, and then bring forward before we approve and work.
Well, we do have a rough estimate, actually.
Yeah.
No, but all we're approving is them to work together and then bring forth something to us. We're not approving any work at all.
Watson?
Yes.
Hushman?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Torica?
Yes.
Price?
Motion carries, six zero. Thank you.
So do I need to do anything with this tomorrow? Do I need to contact anybody?
If you don't mind, just have a check in with Jamie. I can give him that, Joel, I can do the job. If you can, that'd be great.
Time is something, time is essential.
And maybe see if you can reach Chris at Oakland County. He's a good guy, he can, that are especially for all the areas.
Alright, next up is the Trash Colleen Proposed Ordinance. And what we requested was that to be reviewed by our attorney. And that has been reviewed and the information will go to Pat, seeing that Pat is not here. He will bring his proposed ordinance ideas to us at the July meeting. And we continue to discuss the transitioning of electronic packets. And some of us were able to fill out the chart of what we would or wouldn't like. If you have not done that yet and you'd like to, please let Liz know. That will begin at our July meeting. If you choose to receive it one way, the other way, or both, that's your option at this point, if I miss another option, right? And that will start if I go to the July meeting. Alright, H is the manager interviews. And everybody got a chance to receive a thank you letter from Samantha and email from Dahi. And that's the point where we are at now. So discussion can ensue what, and everybody would like to see as a next step between our options.
I make the motion that we go into closed session.
For?
To discuss and deliberate on the candidates.
At this point, we only have one that has interviewed, so we have to decide whether we'd like to interview the other, or whether we'd like to repost or.
We need to decide for the one that's out there right now. I mean, she's been hanging in the bells for two weeks.
Before we interview the other, as we were supposed to interview two?
Yes, well, we, yeah, we need to.
We need to go into closed session to deliberate on the candidate that we interviewed. So we can either bring her on board or deny and move forward. But we need to, we need to make a decision. It's not fair to leave her hanging for this two weeks. We should have went into closed session at the last meeting to discuss and deliberate about it. So she knows.
I support going into closed session. It shouldn't take that long, it should be fairly quick. If only you're talking about one candidate and both of them are recorded with a different one, I'm glad for that, I think it should go pretty quick.
Colleen, would you like, did you need Colin to read that? I was going to say, do you want to?
No, she's motioned to go into closed session to deliberate on village manager candidate.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to take the reason.
Motion made by Councilman Scornica, supported by Councilman Hushman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries, six zero.
My car's broken down.
Is this one that they interviewed before? Samantha? I think she backed out last time, I think. I'm going to have to talk.
One nine oh one, okay, thank you. No, oh yeah, okay.
I know. I thought my whole player went in 10, 15 years ago. It went down 23 feet.
Was it?
I make a motion that we return to open session.
Motion by Councilman Scornica, supported by, who's going to own it?
Me.
Councilman Hayden, to return to open session, 9:20 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, thank you. And does anybody from personnel want to share a rundown? No?
I guess, was that legal to me?
I don't care, I was just offering, you guys decide.
Okay, so I guess that we are going to, at this time, decline the current application from Samantha Bell. And we're going to be bringing in two candidates back for interviews at council meeting that we will schedule for Wednesday. Hopefully, pending response of the candidates. And we will be reposting the position of the village manager with a due date for responses of July.
I'm posting for two weeks, right?
It will go in this, this Friday. It'll go on my, Melissa, you hear this Friday?
No.
So it'll go on like Thursday?
On MML, I can, I do those on Tuesdays.
Okay.
So I will do MML and the citizen tomorrow.
Okay.
Is there? The option for OTB to? Is that that option?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh, I will find out.
Okay.
It was not on there today, because I looked for it.
Okay, just if you can just find out.
Yep.
Yeah. And then just send out an email or a text as what the response was.
So our date for the candidate interviews is, should be announced. Just find contact with them.
So I would need, I believe, a motion to call a special meeting for Wednesday. I know pending response.
I make a motion that we hold a special meeting to, for the purpose of interviewing potential candidates for the open village manager position on Wednesday, June 26th. Time to be determined.
Motion by Councilman Hushman, special meeting Wednesday, supported by Councilman Scornica.
Wednesday is June 26th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We need the timing, they're probably two, right?
Be determined.
Two, three steps, okay. I think we should try to, because otherwise.
Seven and eight ideally.
I think you should put a time.
As long as we get a lot of.
To make sure we get that $18.
Seven and eight.
Seven.
So you're mending your motion.
And mending the motion to, instead of time to be determined, the time, time to be targeted 7:00 PM.
I support the amount.
And then it's Colleen.
Oh, okay.
Alright, I'll be in favor. Opposed? Excellent. Got this. Alright, so next up, we have our items from the village manager's report. They're all in front of you.
Did you prepare this, Liz?
Not that one, I prepared the one on the back of it.
Oh, okay.
So the one that you have from Bill, other than the drain issue, there really hasn't, as far as I know, been any movement on those items. The ones that I prepared, the Brandon School District, the sign right there, they're for Harvey Swanson, they will be replacing their sign this summer. And originally, there was a question on who owned the property where the sign is, and I believe it's in the right way. And it was determined that initially, the school district purchased the sign, did purchase the landscaping and everything, and ever since then, the village has just maintained the landscaping. So that's just an FYI for you, that they will be replacing the sign. The next one, the creek testing, I was really looking for some direction from you guys on that.
Well, I had suggested in the past, because looking at the historical data, it's really difficult to project any trends because of the inconsistency of the testing dates. And then one year when we had extensive testing, you could almost draw a bell curve where the maximum was in the middle of summer. So I had asked in the past whether there was any possibility that we could try to get more consistent testing dates in the middle of summer, so we can maybe be able to start generating data that would be easier to get some statistical analysis.
Yeah, of dog sources.
Yeah, so we can do some projections from it, because, you know, when you have a testing in May, and then the next year it's tested in June, and then the following year in July, it's, you just, you can't correlate the data from year to year.
And who pulls the sample scores?
Well, Bob pulls the samples. Typically, we test the creek when we are required to test the office, and we have those five spots along the. five spots along the creek. Bob pulls the samples for us, and then they go directly to Oakland County with the results. If they are over the, the maximum particle number, we have to do a retest until it comes back under two hundred ninety-nine parts per million, I think is the.
Yeah, I think it would be great to have more data.
I think it should be consistent testing dates. I think it should, you know, the, you know, the first Monday every quarter, however it is, I think it should be a regular testing to get good results.
Yeah, and looking at the, the low peak is in mid-winter, so I was suggesting one in, in, for example, January, one in April, one in October, and then maybe three around the center of the summer month, something like that, so we can get some more balanced statistical points of reference.
But if you, if you do see, look at the graph that I gave you, we did test high in October, which usually we test a little bit lower, and we tested high in February, which was our coldest month.
When these samples are taken, is there a log that says the date, the time, the location, and the temperature outside? Just like, is there, you know, what comes into play that, you know, that we can see that there's any main denominators?
No, not the, the only thing that's not recorded is the temperature outside. We do keep track of the location, the time, and the date.
Yeah, that would be something we could probably go back to weather records and pull that data.
I mean, I just, you know, the temperature, I mean, just from a trending, that's, I think would be a good variable. It's like, when it's really cold, no, it's down, it's like it's.
The factors that we won't be able to tell as, as easily, like, high pieces of rainfall, is it dry?
I wanna know what the height, the level, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But it's like, we could put that in a, a trending report, we can create a report that says, oh, they, you know, they tested here, the temperature, you know, was it a morning cold? Actually, I mean, I don't know, just to kind of show some.
Always a morning cold.
There always morning?
Always morning, because we have to have the samples back in the office by noon.
So they come to go up. I mean, just something so we can see, yeah, that, you know, these are, oh, these are constant denominators, and this is why, you know.
Yeah, those levels on October, that definitely was.
Yeah, if it's dry that day, if it's wet that day, yeah, just a side note in your little trending report.
So would we like to see third year forty-five days to begin with?
Time to retest? I think we gotta do it monthly.
Year round, or for summer, or what's your question?
Well, until we're below, and once we're below, then we go back to cordless or something, you know? But if we exceed it, we gotta stay monthly.
We should stay on top of it.
Well, we have, we are required to retest when it comes back above normal.
How, what's the frequency of that?
Until it comes back below.
Yeah, but I mean, monthly, or weekly, or daily, or maybe?
So if I get a result back that's over, two weeks later, I'm sending another test.
So the requirement is two weeks?
Well, the requirement is as soon as possible, and it's typically two weeks before I can get a check cut, I can get, you know, everything all set up. It's typically how long it takes for me to get everything all set to do the test.
Okay, 'cause I see you have August fourteenth, and then August, where they were high, August twenty-eighth they were high, and then it goes all the way until October second, which is almost a two months, well, I guess a little three months. I, I really think that when it gets into the summer months, I would say, starting, say, mid-June, do every thirty days, like, June fifteenth, you know, pick, whether you pick, like, the second Monday, or whatever, or whatever, you know, something like that. But do something like that, when we do it every month for those, for the, the summer months, even if they're low, I would still like to have the data for, for the physical analysis.
I'd like to start it every thirty days and do that.
Yeah, starting in June and go through, at least June, July, August, if they are dropped down by that point, we don't have to do more until we drop down, but then, you know, once it gets past August, I would, typically, they do drop down quite low in winter time anyways.
And these results of the new ones do keep up on the web?
Yes.
Yes, I agree.
So the next testing.
Well, I have three samples out for retests right now.
And those samples are.
So thirty days from your test would be the best one? Yeah, depending on the results.
Thirty days, depending on if it comes back failed. I mean, it takes two weeks to get a check cut, to get that retested?
Well, I was putting together council packets, and I mean, it's just one of those things that, you know, I'm doing the best I can.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just, I don't know, if it's not, it's not you, it's just, I'm just trying to figure out, like, the, the process for the, for two weeks, okay?
Where is that tested at?
Okay.
And what's the C D B G you wanted to?
Oh, yes, the C D B G, first of all, two thousand eighteen funds, all bids were received, all one bid was received, and I'm ready to fill out a subrecipient agreement and cut the check as soon as we move into the next budget year. So the bid is awarded to O S F, and that's our six thousand dollar year. That's for program year two thousand eighteen, then we'll be done and over with. Program year two thousand nineteen, the federal government came up with some extra money, and Oakland County decided to bestow upon us some extra funds, where normally we would have gotten six thousand dollars. This year, or that program year, we're gonna get a total of eight thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars. And after a discussion with Carlos Bradlin, our C D B G coordinator with Oakland County, administratively, it makes most sense to give that money to the child services, youth services, that we had discussed earlier, rather than emergency services, because when you're dealing with youth, children, and seniors, you can name your organization. You don't have to go through the whole bid process and get the bids coming in to you. So that is what I, the decision I made in going with Oakland County's suggestion.
So that's going to give them the extra in the two thousand nineteen year?
For program year two thousand nineteen, which means they will not be able to use our funds until July first, twenty twenty.
Thank you. Well, that's good news. And you also have included there, Bob would like to start including his report as well, along with the manager's report, and that's something that he would like to continue doing, so you'll see that in there too. If you have any questions, please get with them, let them know. You'll find that in your packet with the manager's report each month. All right, any questions on the manager's report?
Just one question about, about, you know, I've driven around, looked at that one situation on Edward Street, and to me, it looks like it's kind of a drainage issue. Has Bob taken a look at that from the perspective of whether there's something can be done with drainage that's bad?
I think that would go to the title or the.
He did, and evaluating and trying to keep up, we also had another citizen to respond on, oh, gosh, what street is he on? James, one on East Ridge, one on Edward, it's just a who needs it now and who's first. James is the one currently being taken care of, the other two are in review, and Bob will.
You're talking about drainage, or?
Mm-hmm, yep. Pooling water on the streets and the drainage, so he was kind of just.
We actually are.
Looking at deciding which one's where. I mean, I think we always are, but, yes, those were specific, three different residents that had reached out, and so he's working with those currently. I mean, there are always more.
Bob did contact me, and he did show me a drain that is on the basketball court, that he would like to, he knows within five feet where this thing is at, there's a junction, he knows he's got, and he believes that by opening that up, he can get that to drain. I believe it comes across, like, the direction area wide, it comes from the, I would say, the church area, the area diagonally. But I had recommended that, okay, it makes sense that you open that up, but to make, first make sure that we have from Fred, and we have all the basketball events done, and then he, then I told him, then once that, we know that, see, I will, then you can take it to council to have them open that. It'll be, it'll be locked, locked off in one, one basketball court. So, but he did say he was very confident that he could open that drain up, but.
Okay, good, yeah, 'cause I think that, that drainage issues, anywhere, place where you have the interior roads needs to be fixed first, 'cause then fixing the road won't take if we don't fix the drainage issues.
Right. Problem is, we got so many drains, we don't know where they all go, and that's one of the issues here is.
You know, maybe, maybe Bob can try to reconstruct some maps based on whatever knowledge he can garner from people who might have some knowledge about that.
I forgot to mention this, I found out at three fifteen this afternoon, when I was picking up the key for the building, the trust fund grant, Mary Karlock, was not going to be doing a site visit this year, because she's been here for the last two years. I found out today at three fifteen, she actually is coming on Thursday at three or three fifteen, and I believe she's bringing her boss, her supervisor, with her, so I will be meeting her out there with Bob, hopefully.
To the?
The Sherman concession stand.
Park.
So keep your fingers crossed.
Thursday at three?
Around three-ish.
Three.
She's gonna be at the township park at two thirty, and then she's coming here after.
So we have all the drawings for it, right, and we have everything ready? Good, that's a good sign.
Your fingers crossed?
Since we're still talking about D P W and that, you know, it's been on my mind, because I know the guys, they're in and out of there, and sometimes, you know, they, they don't lock up every single time, you know, that they leave, and it's understandable, because they come and go a lot, but I'm just concerned with some of the things that have been posted in Citizen, on how kids are just walking up and opening up car doors that are open, and, and they're removing items and all that from, you know, I mean, this is happening a lot lately. I'm just thinking that maybe we should look at the possibility of installing a few security cameras around the D P W building, just to make sure that we can monitor it.
Do we have things missing now?
No. Do we wanna wait until some large items?
No, but.
I mean.
Hey, I'm a pro.
Lock it up.
I mean, that's a good point.
Well, then they need to get it handled, lock it up then.
Fortunately, it seems like those activities are more in the southeast area of the township than not, as much up in here.
I was gonna say, not with.
I'm sorry?
Well, that's, we're not exempt.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah, I agree, it'd be better to be proactive before we start getting some of that type of activity around here, 'cause there has been activities around here in the past.
Right. Really?
I've had my computer take a note of my car and that.
Yeah, I just. All right, well, that's something definitely.
It happens.
And you buy some enough equipment.
But I'm just.
No, I mean.
How much it costs? Do you want to estimate the cost of it?
Well, we have to research that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause, actually, the other day, when I was there to get my packet, and they all left, I followed them, and it's like it was all unlocked, and it's like, ugh.
I mean, you can have like an audio camera system, it's a nice wireless system and all that, for under four hundred bucks.
It's just a thing.
They have cameras, that's something to get a security camera system.
And if it's under five cameras, there's no, there's no fees for monitoring and all that other stuff, so.
Yeah. Let's just research it and then, that's all. All right, next is our public accountments, now agenda.
I'm gonna make this quick so I can get out of here. No, I wanted to just say thank you, obviously, for the extra C D B G funds that are gonna be sent off to the Children's Services, which is, hey, child twelve and hundred allows us to get C D B G funds for them. The township took the one for youth, and it gets us thirteen and older to, they didn't get extra funds, so I don't know, I gotta go after that and find out what's up. But I wanted to thank you for, I know you, you did our, the resolution for we can get our lottery license, which we have not had returned yet, they're not real speedy with that, so we're not sure we're going to be able to get it, have that fifty-fifty this year, but I appreciate that, and you increased the fee that you paid for Brandon Groveland Youth Assistance from two thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars. And, and we are working diligently to, to spend every penny of it. It's not real difficult, actually, it's, it's a bigger challenge of what we can't spend it on, is the bigger challenge, but I just wanted to, wanted to thank you for your support for that organization. We're doing fairly good now, we're up close to a twenty thousand dollar budget between the fees for Brandon Groveland, and we get, we get just in-kind services from the library, Brandon Schools, and Brandon Rec. And the balance of that is either through donations or fundraisers that we do to create that much money. And C D B G is great, but I want you to know that we have to spend that prior to being able to get it, what, six months or a year later, which makes interesting budgeting to, 'cause you gotta spend that money to get it back, and, and you don't get it back in the next week after you've spent it. Takes a while, but, no, thank you. Thank you.
Many other comments? All right, how about items from trustees, is there anything else, Colleen?
A while back, when we were talking about the cell phone stipend, I asked for an updated roster, the phone numbers on there, was, could you send that up to us, please? And then the tax levy form, Beth was gonna provide that.
Sorry, I don't know how I managed that. After the cell phones taken.
The tax levy form was gonna be given to us, and we didn't get that.
She emailed it, as I know.
I saw that.
First it wasn't attached, and then the second one was.
From Beth? I didn't see it in my packet.
Oh, yeah, there is.
An email that I know, I don't have a paper.
And then, do you know Edwards and Bersey, was that light, the street light, was that checked out? Um, I don't know if you remember to do that. And I was wondering what the reason was for the D D A, O T V meetings not to be out on O T V? The last one was December of eighteen, and I'm wondering why, 'cause that, they were, they were televising D D A, it's like I'd like that to be looked at.
They are, they have been, they occasionally miss a meeting or two.
The last one I saw was December of eighteen, so I don't know where the other, maybe they haven't put them out there yet, but just to follow, yeah, where the D D A meetings are.
So there'll be a question?
So they're, he's televising all of those, and once he gets them out there, they'll all be there? Okay, great.
And I have DVDs of all the meetings that have been recorded.
That's it, other than I, I would just like to make a motion that all cell phones are turned off, in off mode, remain off during our meetings.
You're talking about council or council trustees?
Council, our phones need to be turned off during meetings, and I'd like to make a motion, all cell phones are turned off for the duration of our meetings.
Well, that won't be possible, 'cause we're going to e-packets, we'll be using our phones in order to run the meetings, so that's not possible.
Well, not everybody's going to the e-packet.
But some people are, and we'll be using our phones for that, so.
So we use a phone to tablet screen?
Whatever people choose to.
I, I was, I, I think silent mode, or vibrate-only mode would be.
But the thing is, well, we, we did have that in the past, and the phones still vibrate, and it's, it's very, one, unprofessional, and it does come across, you know, in the gallery, and it's like in the phones that there's a vibrate, and then we've had trustees, you know, under the table with their phones texting during a meeting when they should be, you know, paying attention, and whatnot, it's just, I just don't, I just, it doesn't look good from the appearance of, you know, under the table texting, texting and writing, the cameras out there. One of our last meetings, it was going on, so that's why I'm making the recommendation, that the phones are turned off, and if we can't self-control ourselves, then we need to put them in our purses or our cars.
You know, I will say this is that, you know, we all, hopefully, we all have family and stuff too, and sometimes there's those emergency situations, and people, you know, may need to.
Which is exactly why I'm not going to, last meeting, when my phone was going off, my child had a concussion, and when I got home, I took the emergency room, so that is exactly what I was doing, and I have a right to do that, he was my exchange student.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think we're adults, and we, we don't need to have an official emergency.
Well, then, they do need to be on vibrate or off, or, or so that they're not vibrating, because we've had the past, they are vibrating, and so.
They should do that.
So I will draw the motion that we just need to be cognizant of, of the cell phones.
Absolutely.
If that's efficient.
On or off or. 'Cause in the past, I'll, real quick, 'cause in the past, then, there's been texting, you know, like, from here, and, let's say I was texting Shelby, or something. Cause in the past, I'll, real quick, cause in the past, then, there's been texting, you know, like, from here, and let's say I was texting shelter, so we don't, we wanna, we don't wanna have that kind of thing going on, so, that's all. But nothing else.
That's a good point. I'm good.
I just wanted to make a comment that I, I did legally make a motion today that was supported, and it was turned down, and I believe there's some legal ramifications from that, and I will be investigating that. That's all I have to say.
Motion. How motion?
A motion to appoint somebody to personnel.
Oh, okay.
A motion to motion, and regardless of. There's legal, there's legalities around that, so. I will report out my findings.
All right. Anything else? Larry?
Yeah, a couple of things first, I, I would like to see if Bob, amongst his busy schedule, might have a chance to start taking a look at some of the sidewalk situations. I know that there's a couple of sections that are getting broken and cracked, may need to consider replacing. I think one might be intersection of Darren and Mill there, I think there's a section that's broken on, what's that, James?
James.
James, okay. But there's a section that right at, where it goes down at the crosswalk across the road, it's a kind of like, the slab's broken in half and offset a little bit, so.
Yeah, I think maybe reported, that was at the last meeting.
Okay, yeah, cause I noticed that there's, and walking around town and stuff, there's a, I've noticed that there's several sections around town where there's some cracks across some of the paving sections, stuff like that. And maybe we should start taking a look at those, and then flag where it is right, and see what we might need to do to adjust and or correct some of those. Second thing, this comes to Open Meetings Act, there was text messages going around, and I, one of those text messages did raise a little bit of concern with me about Open Meetings Act. Not the whole message, just one small part of it. And when I responded back asking people be mindful, it seemed by the response that it was, clearly there was misunderstanding of why I was getting concerned about that. So I thought I would just explain that here in front of everybody, rather than carry on a conversation text. So I just want to say that what, what it stated essentially is, would be nice to know, as the village manager searched, did we repost? That portion of it, I have no problem with, just simply informational question. It was the last part that says, if not, we need to. Cause in that case, that's basically a trustee expressing a direction on action that the council needs to make a decision on. And I think that's where we start getting a little bit on the border of Open Meetings Act, because this text message went to all the council members. So it was just a reminder that, that we need to be careful about what we say, cause this is relatively minor, but we do need to, to keep in mind that anything we state that can be considered a view or, or a stated position on, on the topic could be perceived as an act of deliberation. So that's why I mentioned that. We just need to keep in mind that, and just be careful how, you know, what we put in our messages when we're on copy. That's it for me?
Thank you.
I'm good.
All right. Thank you. And I don't have anything else currently. Except entertaining a motion from Jer.
I'll make that motion to Jer. Support.
All right, motion by Mark Fonsu, supported by Mark Robinson. Can I have, and all in favor? Opposed. Motion carries at nine fifty. Oh, did you know this? Right there, July. That's, I can assure you, it's July.
Yep. Yeah, I had noticed the passing of.
To get ready for the practice.
If anybody cries or texts me, my phone's in the car. I still have to let you know.
My phone hasn't worked since Friday, so.